Okay, if you're waiting on me, you're biking up. Alright, there we go. Like this, okay. Okay, can I have everybody's attention, please? Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the meeting to order here at 5:30 here on Tuesday, August the first, and welcome, everyone, to this regular business meeting of the Steenville City Council. And tonight, I want to begin by officially saying welcome to our City Secretary, Stacey King, who's sitting in the seat all by herself this morning, so... If everyone will please stand and join the council in the place of allegiance and the place of the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state of God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Take your seats. It's my privilege to introduce now Pastor Don Middleton from Cross Timbers Church of Christ to give our invocation this evening, so, Pastor Middleton.
Let's go to the Father. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening. Father, we thank you for bringing everybody here safely. We recognize your presence here today, and I just pray and ask that you will bring your blessing upon the city council. Thank you for Mayor Weldon and all those that are on the council and others who are working with the city and for the city, Father. And I pray and ask your blessings on the proceedings this evening, and just pray and ask that we will keep you first in all the things that we seek to do, Father. And I just pray and ask that as the evening goes on, that things will continue to be a blessing, Father. I just thank you so much for all that you do for us every day. Help us to count our blessings. We just want to lift these things up to you in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor. As you always tell me, unless the Lord builds a city, those who labor, labor in vain, so thank you for that. Well, we've got a very, very special presentation this evening that does not occur very often, and it is, you know, the men and women who protect this city do so 24/7, 365, without regard to themselves, but for others, to protect and to serve. And it is an occupation, a profession, where you never know when you get up in the morning what's gonna happen that day. It can be a mundane, routine day with nothing going on, and then there can be events that occur that are life-threatening, life-changing, and in the instance that we're gonna honor tonight, life-saving. And so with that, I'd like to ask Chief King to come forward. He's gonna read a citation, and if I could ask our two recognized officers, Jeremy Lanier and Sergeant Orlando Gaten, to come forward, and let's read the citation.
As the mayor said, our officers face challenging situations every day, but occasionally situations occur that really highlight the outstanding work that they do, and this is such, just one of those occasions. So both Sergeant Orlando Gaten and Officer Jeremy Lanier, the Steenville Police Department, distinguished themselves by heroic actions in the saving of a human life in Steenville, Texas, on March 23rd, 2017. At approximately 1:40 a.m., both Sergeant Gaten and Officer Lanier responded to the report of a man on the side of the South Loop Bridge in Steenville, Texas. Upon arrival, they discovered a man with one leg over the rail of the bridge who was intent on taking his own life. By working together, Officer Lanier was able to approach the subject from behind while Sergeant Gaten spoke to him and kept him focused on him. Just prior to jumping, Officer Lanier was able to grab the man and pull him back over the rail, bringing him back to safety. By their prompt actions and humanitarian regard for their fellow man, both Sergeant Gaten and Officer Lanier have reflected great credit upon themselves and the Steenville Police Department. So we present you this evening with these life-saving awards.
Good job, guys. They said saving a life was easy, just don't like us give a speech. that I've obtained this evening, but they are tied to an item we have for action, so I'm gonna defer those to that point in the agenda. But if there's anyone that has an item of interest that they would like to come and speak to, now's the time to do that. If you just come forward and state your name and address for the record, please. Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on. And we've got an item, item six on the agenda, consider approval of an encroachment agreement for the construction of a balcony at 104 East College Street. Now, I'll ask Jeremy Allen, please, to present that to the council.
Mayor, member council, Mr. Boyd Wagner, owner of 104 East College, is seeking an encroachment agreement with the city of Steenville in order to construct an overhang balcony. Mr. Wagner has provided some photos of similar structures, as well as plans and drawings, to our department. Let's see if we can find...I guess it's not on there. We had some pictures. I think you guys have them in your packet, I believe. I was hoping to show the audience those, but similar cities have these, and so Mr. Wagner's here, he can answer any questions. This is the building next to the senior center over on college, and he has some good plans to really make that building look better, and if you have any specific questions, he can answer those for you.
Okay, and I'll see if this council have any questions about the encroachment agreement?
Mr. Wagner, have you exhausted all of the...explored and exhausted all the engineering work that might be done to build that balcony without having to go and obtain this encroachment? Have you explored the possibilities?
Yeah, there are any possibilities to do.
It must be done with...
Well, I...according to survey, I own about three feet of the sidewalk, you know, which you need more than that to...if you look at the Grandberry, they have 14 different balconies that stick out, at least nine or 10 feet. One of the city sidewalks, Grandberry has granted their permission to have all of them. I think there are 14 in the Comanche and Sunday, High Cove, and personally, I think that all the sidewalks would look a bit better to have those balconies over so you walk them over the shade, you know, and it's right, and you have a...
Is that the draw to your saloon, a big umbrella? Is that the draw to your saloon, is a big umbrella?
Well, you know, and I've got a picture of one in Georgetown with people with the table set above the balcony, or the thing that sticks out there, you know, and you can't do that on three feet. And it's not gonna be attached to the building where you can follow it, it's a pillar rather than where it is.
And that goes over the existing sidewalk, so you're gonna go into that little step-down piece where it looks like the water meter is, and looks like maybe some...
I think it...I think the pillars go out eight feet, and then there's over there for a foot or so.
Right.
So I don't think it'll interfere with the traffic, you know, the traffic won't do it. It's on the edge of the sidewalk, the pillars on the edge of the sidewalk.
Okay. One for Jeremy.
Okay.
So since the water meters and whatnot are in that little step-down, just beyond that, you know, there's like a double curve, there's two levels going up to that building...
Well, we've examined, we've looked at the plans, the architectural plans at this point. We're okay with those on that side of it. We still, with this encroachment agreement, have to approve the actual design and where that, you know, how that gets attached, you know, in the concrete, so we will oversee that process and make sure that we're okay with it, public works okay with it. So we're not just giving the green light, we still have to approve that, and that's what's stated in that encroachment agreement, that we have the ultimate right to say yes. And he, we, I've had this conversation with Mr. Wagner, he understands that, and he's gonna work with us, and we'll make it all work. We think it'll be a good, a good project.
Other questions?
Jeremy, will this be attached to the building at the back and pillars in the front, or is it gonna have pillars supporting all sides of it?
I'll have to go back and look at the plans. I think it's just the pillars, and then it'll actually be attached to the building, if that's what you're asking.
Yes, yes.
So it'll be attached to the building, similar to what your pictures show in that, it'll be attached to the building, and the pillars will maybe support the front of that.
Okay. Well, and we won't have the problems that we've had with some other balconies, and the second question is, will there be tables or people on top of this, or is it just for the shade?
I believe there's gonna be, the way I understand, there's gonna be some tables, if somebody can sit up there.
And there, it will not be relying on the building to support it, it's actually hanging up out there like this. The pillars are gonna be up against the building and on the inside part, and on the outside.
Okay.
Standing all the way is gonna be on the...
On the pillars rather than the building, okay. It's on the college side of the building, on what I would call the narrow side of the building facing back north, correct?
Right, and we also wanted to install a smaller one on the side, basically for a way to get down, on the roof, you got two ways to get down, elevator don't count, so they'll be way to go down on the ramp side, yeah, but it won't be as wide. But that'll be supported the same way, it's not gonna rely on the building to...
Okay.
Now, the side one will be an encroachment agreement, or he'll have to get something from text out, because Graham is a text out right of way, and so we're just handling the college side in our particular right of way.
Okay.
He understands that, and he'll work with that process, and we'll work with him through that process as well.
I know of a business that used to be located across the street from that many years ago.
That business wasn't that big.
I've seen trucks on that curb more than once trying to make that turn, going back towards the east, and that's a concern for me about whether they, if they try to negotiate that, if they will hit the corner of that, is it gonna be an offset from the street far enough back to prevent that, or is that part of the design and engineering that y'all are gonna have to help with, Jeremy?
Well, I mean, we'll oversee that, the plans that we had seen for the side, there was a little more of a setback on the side than what the front would be, so I think, I think we're fine on the Graham side, and the front hangs out a little bit further than what the side is, but ultimately, that'd be a text-out decision if they're gonna allow...
No, I'm talking about the college side.
Yeah, the college side, I mean, I think we're gonna be fine. I think they, I think we have a couple feet still before it actually hits the road, but it'll be up high, too, so, I mean, it's not like, you know, a car's gonna be hit, I mean, if you get a diesel truck that jumped the curb, of course, you know, he's gonna, he's gonna have some damage, but I think we're fine. I mean, looking at the plans, and Robert, our building officials, look at them, we think it's good, I mean, as long as the encroachment agreement is good, and then we'll walk him through that process when we, as a construction part.
With staff oversight, then, staff is comfortable with approval of this agreement, recognizing that y'all will oversee the construction.
That's right.
And one of the significant things is this will be constructed at Mr. Wagner's expense, and if at some point in the future it becomes necessary to remove any or all of it, that will also be at his or whoever the property owner is at that time, at their expense, if I read the agreement correctly.
That's right, and Mr. Wagner has agreed to that, so...
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Alright, if not, I'll entertain a motion related to the encroachment agreement in our packet on page 14.
Mayor, I move approval of the encroachment agreement for 104 College with Mr. Wagner.
Second.
Okay, so, motion by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mrs. Zachary, to approve the encroachment agreement for the construction of a balcony at 104 East College Street. Any discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that motion carries unanimous vote.
I'd like to say I'm really excited, Mr. Wagner, about a new business on the square, though. Thanks.
I was gonna say, good to see you back here in the council chambers. Thanks, thanks for, for the...
You got a chair out there.
Yeah. As Carla just said, the work to take what is, I've been told, the oldest building on the square is, has begun, and that's exciting news, and so appreciate you stepping out with that. Alright, the next item on the agenda is the nominations committee report, and as you can see, tonight, Mr. Harrison was unable to attend the meeting. He's on his way back to Steenville from out of town, so I'm going to briefly describe the nominations committee report that took place on July 18th. The first meeting was to consider a vacancy in the Board of Adjustment, place one, and there were two applications for that, and so one standing application was recommended by the committee, Brandon Huckabee, to place one, and the new application received from Malcolm Cross to an alternate position for the Board of Adjustment. And so with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of those appointments from the committee.
Mayor, a motion that we appoint Brandon Huckabee to place one on the Board of Adjustment, and Malcolm Cross is alternate.
Okay, motion by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. McClintock, to appoint Brandon Huckabee to place one, and Malcolm Cross is alternate to the Board of Adjustments. Any discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that motion carries unanimous vote. Alright, council, on page 16 is the summary. There was discussion by the committee to consider a reduction in the Planning and Zoning Commission from 10 members to nine members. That discussion included consideration of what has unfortunately continued to be a problem within the city to get applications for our boards and commissions, and whether the number 10 being an even number would cause problem with the, you know, the voting process because of the even number, and nine being an odd, to allow that tiebreaker to be in place. A motion was made to recommend reducing the size to nine members from its current 10, but the motion did not pass by a majority, so no recommendation was brought this evening to the full council. So is there anything, anyone from the council, from the committee, you'd like to add to that? Okay, so, we discussed this earlier, and since the committee didn't make a decision, they basically have moved the action to the council, and so we need to...
So we need an action of some kind?
Right, so we need to...
A motion?
Right.
I make the motion that the Planning and Zoning Committee remain at 10 members.
Okay, motion by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Warren, to retain the Planning and Zoning Commission membership at 10. Any discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that motion carries unanimous vote. The committee also met on July 25th to consider several charter amendments. This is a result of a workshop that the council had, where our city charter has not been updated in several years, and there were many items that were discussed to include a number of members on the council, and let me find the page here so I can...
Page 19, yeah.
Get in there. There were a total of 21 proposed amendments, and some of these are administrative in nature, others substantive. The committee made recommendations that a charter review committee be established that would consist of the nominations committee and two citizens appointed by the committee Chair Red Harrison, and so the committee basically is gonna continue to work on this, but also include citizen input and bring that to the council at a future, a future date. And that concludes the results of the nominations committee report for the evening. I now move to the Planning and Development Committee Report, and turn the floor to Jerry Warren, for the chairman of the committee. So Jerry?
I spent the afternoon in the dentist's office, so Jeremy, where are you? You're gonna have to do the talking. I think we are in agreement that we'll grant the request for the varietons septic system.
That'll be a motion that we'll hear shortly.
Okay.
So, but the recap, as you guys heard it, at the committee level.
You guys are studying the food vendors and sign regulations.
Yeah, we think with the mobile food vendor, we, Ms. Zachary, and a couple of the food vendors we met, we think we ironed out the details. We'll have that for the next agenda in September, we'll have the updated food vendor ordinance. As far as the signed regulations, we're gonna ask that council, that we table that until we can have a public meeting or bring it back to council for a workshop. There was quite a few changes through the P and Z. We think it'd be better to, more transparent, if we gave the public a chance to comment on those changes.
Okay, the thoroughfare plan had been removed...
That's right.
...from the agenda, and the incentive, improvement incentive program has been, it's still under further review.
That's right. You guys asked staff to go back and come up with some other, look at some different scenarios, so we'll do that, and we'll bring you guys back some different ideas or some thoughts with incentive program targeted toward, you know, some downtown, downtown area. That's all I got for you.
Alright.
I mean, that was what we discussed at that meeting, and I think that's kind of a little bit of a recap, and there'll be a couple of those items that we make a motion on shortly.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion on that request for varietons septic system?
Yes, and we'll do that later in the, in the meeting when we move to that section, so thank you for that.
Okay.
Alright, any other comments, Jerry?
Not from me.
Okay, alright, good. If I may make one comment, I appreciate the work that the committee has done, and Jeremy, your effort with this food vendor ordinance and the way that it's been handled, you may have noticed, we had an ordinance that came to us, it was a template, and we used it as a guide to tailor it to how Steenville had to operate, instead of just how somebody else chose to operate, and we included the businesses affected by the ordinance in the discussion to help shape it so that it's a workable solution for all. There's obviously the need to provide oversight for public health, safety reasons, but the council and staff worked to ensure that we had business input on that, and we relied on some of the expertise on the council to help garner some interest and input to that, so Jerry, thanks for your work on that as well. Alright, as you can see, it's kind of...
It's not personal, it's personal.
Yeah, nobody's sitting on my left or right tonight, so Brady Pendleton could not be here this evening either, so the next item on the agenda is the Public Health and Safety Committee Report, and it's chaired by Mr. Pendleton, and so I'll give a brief summary of that, and then I'll ask Chief King to provide a little other input. The committee, Brady, Carla Russell, Doug Sveen, Red Harrison, met on July 25th, 2017, to discuss a proposed ordinance to regulate credit access businesses, better known as payday loan businesses. After discussion was held, the committee took no action, but recommended that members of the committee be formed to communicate with state and local stakeholders regarding this type of ordinance, and possibly schedule a meeting in the future for further discussion. And I know during the meeting, Mr. McClintock, Mark, you volunteered to head up that committee, and I don't know if you've got anything you wanna say about that this evening?
Well, I've, I know Red decided, Red agreed to visit with Dr. Sheffield, and Doug agreed to visit with Senator Estes. The chief agreed to contact the local businesses, the owners or managers of the local businesses, and try to get them involved in the discussion, and I've, I agreed to talk to the Ministerial Alliance, and Texas Workforce Commission, and city officials tried to put a meeting there, and I've, I'm two-thirds of the way through with my part, so...
Okay.
I'm getting close.
Alright, great.
And at some point, we'll come back together and debrief, I guess.
Alright, okay. Well, and Chief King, you got anything you wanna add?
I've got that one.
Okay, well, and thank you, Chief, for your tremendous research related to this. I'll just share for, for the citizens here tonight and those listening, the council requested input on this, and the chief shows up with a binder that's about that thick with detailed research on this. It was really informative and very helpful in us moving forward, so thank you for all your work on that. And, Mark, thank you for volunteering to read that. Alright, and that's the lone item from the Public Health and Safety Committee Report. So we'll move on to the Planning and Zoning Commission, a section of the agenda tonight, and I will at this time open a public hearing for case RZ 2017-002, to consider approval of a rezone of a property located at 1092 West Harlton Street, being lots 1A, 1B, 14B, and part of 14A Block 16 of the S5400 Park Place addition to the city of Steenville, from R3 to B1, and ask Jeremy to come forward and brief this item, and then I'll call for public input on that.
Mayor, council, Abken Austin Pack is requesting a rezone of the property located at 1092 West Harlton Street, being lots 1A, 1B, 14B, and part of 14A Block 16 of the 5400 Park Place addition to city of Steenville, from R3 multifamily residential to B1 neighborhood business. Mr. Pack's wife currently owns University Flowers on West Washington, and they would like to put the shop in the Victorian house located on 1092 West Harlton, as you'll see in the picture, and I believe you guys have it in your packet. The comprehensive plan projected land use is multifamily. In the building use regulations, multifamily, this residential district provides for medium to high-density city neighborhood development. The primary land use allows for single-family dwellings to...
development. The primary land use allows for single-family dwellings, two- to four-family dwelling units, and multifamily housing buildings and complexes. All R three zoning will be appropriate to the city-style neighborhood. Recreational, religious, and educational uses are permitted so as to contribute to the natural elements of, of a convenient, balanced, attractive neighborhood. Development with the district is intended to be protected from encroachment of land activities that do not contribute to the aesthetic and functional well-being of the intended district environment. That's out of your zoning regulations. The Neighborhood Business District accommodates trade and personal services facilities that meet the needs of enhanced and the quality of life of residential neighborhoods throughout the city. Various retail, trade, and services used in the Neighborhood Business Districts are intended to become an integral part of the neighborhood. Requirements for open space and off-street parking are more restrictive and are compatible with adjacent residential areas. Spacing, air circulation, landscaping, unrestricted sightlines are included as requirements for Neighborhood Business District to provide a harmonious relationship with other residential, educational, religious, recreational land activities. That's a lot. That's all in your zoning ordinance. That's where I got it from. The water of the property is served by the four-inch city water main located on the property line at Harlton Street. Property is served by a six-inch sanitary sewer main located on property line at Harlton Street. The property is fronting Harlton Street. The, see from the zoning map, the, the property for which B one neighborhood district zoning is requested is bound to the north, south, and east by R three multifamily development. And to the west across Ollie is neighborhood district B one. At the planning commission, two citizens spoke in opposition of this rezone. Staff does not recommend the rezone of ten ninety-two Harlton Street according to state law and our subdivision ordinance. Decisions must be made based on the comprehensive plan. The Stevensville Comprehensive Plan adopted in two thousand eight, which includes future land use map, shows the neighborhood to be multifamily. Changing the property to Neighborhood Business District is not consistent with the future land use map and would not be harmonious with the neighborhood. Planning and zoning commission unanimously voted to deny the request to rezone the property located at ten ninety-two West Harlton Street. So if, if you, if you guys choose to overturn that, you wouldn't need a three-quarters majority vote.
Any questions for Jeremy?
Yes, sure.
Mr. Nix?
Jeremy, the, the zoning requirements list uses for the various zoning, if my memory is correct, and for the R three zoning, that, that is the current zoning of the property, the proposed business is not considered an acceptable use. Is that right?
That's right.
And the only way to change that, then, would be to change the zoning of that particular parcel of property to the B one, which would accommodate a business rather than a residential use?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
It would take an amendment to the comprehensive plan to do it, wouldn't it?
If we follow state, state law and our, and our subdivision ordinance, that's right, we would do, we would update the comprehensive plan to show that, that, that would be a, the projected use for that area would be, you know, neighborhood business. And so we could amend it and do it that way.
But at this point, we really don't have a choice.
We have, and Alan, Mr. Barnes and I have talked, we, I mean, we are looking at a process to update our future land use. You know, with, if we, if we go without a consultant, I mean, we're looking probably a six to eight-month process to update that. And that's getting community input and letting the citizens really have a lot of input on, you know, where they, how they think the city should grow and, and, and the direction it should go, so.
Okay, Ms. Russell, you?
I did have a question. Right across the street to the west, that zombie one, right? On the other side of Ollie?
Yeah.
I thought you said something different.
The orange, the, all that orange right across the street is, is neighborhood business.
And Harlton's master plan shows that Harlton will eventually encompass all the area to Ollie. Is that correct?
But our master plan does not, I mean, coincide with Harlton's.
It doesn't take into consideration Harlton's master.
It didn't in two thousand eight. I, my.
So at, when we update it, will we take into consideration Harlton's plan?
We will. We'll make sure that that's, that's part of the conversation when we do that.
So this is the conversation we need to have, obviously.
Okay, other questions for Jeremy? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, I'm going to, I guess I can do this one of two ways. I can call these names off or I'll just simply say those wishing to speak in, in favor of the proposal. If you would come forward at this time, anyone wishing to speak in favor. Just state your name and address for the record. And just a reminder, you're an individual, you're limited to three minutes in your discussion, so, good evening.
My name is Carrie Pack and my address is twelve twenty-five North Cleveland Avenue. I have owned University Flowers and College, et cetera, for five years. I am a lifelong resident of Stevensville and a fourth-generation business owner. I'm here tonight to request the change of use for the property located at ten ninety-two West Harlton. And if you look at your folders that have been prepared for you, to illustrate my vision and to, and my desire to comply with what's best for this neighborhood and community. A little about my business, I am a flower shop, obviously. We also have Harlton merchandise. We make trophies, plaques, and awards. And we are also the Greek boutique for Harlton State University. Per my point of sale software, it monitors my walk-in business and phone-in business. Phone orders make up seventy-five percent of my business. So I don't have a lot of people walking in. My daily walk-in average is twenty people. This home is a hundred and twenty-three years old and maintaining that is a little cost prohibitive for residents. As a business, however, there are grants and tax, tax incentives that offset that expense. And I would love to get a historical marker for this property. My husband, Austin, and I have put a tremendous amount of thought and planning into making this property a beautiful, historical, neighborhood-friendly business and an asset to this community. And I'm gonna let him tell you a little bit more about those plans.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Austin Paddock. I also reside at one two two five North Cleveland Avenue. As my wife stated, she's owned University Flowers and College, et cetera, now for five years. We purchased this home back in May, I believe. And as Mr. Allen stated, if you look at the, the current zoning, everything west of Ollie in the blues neighborhood business, everything to the east of Ollie currently is multifamily. There was mention that this could possibly be spot zoning. By the definition of spot zoning, it cannot be. And you can look in the package and you can see Mr. Josh Allen's legal opinion on the fact, being that there is a, a B one zone directly adjacent to the property currently that negates a spot zoning issue. Also, with a multifamily zoning, it, it, it presents the possibility that a historic home can be torn down with a, a five-foot from the property line. Within five feet, a facility up to thirty-five feet can be built for a multifamily. So there was concerns from the neighbors that share the property line at, at ten eighty West Harlton, which is the largest property line shared with our property, a sightline from our property to theirs. You could see into the, into the backyard, you could see what's going on with their families. I understand that. I'm a family man as well. The, the issue with multifamily and you have a three-story apartment, or you have a duplex, or you have a townhome, there's nothing that regulates that you have to have anything that prohibits the sightline from this, where there is in a B one. And we, if you look at the, the drawings on the first page of your packet, you see we, we intend, there's already a six-foot privacy fence that, that borders this property along with the ten eighty. We also plan to plant shrubbery to prevent it, to, to prevent sightline from the neighborhood, excuse me, from the neighborhood, ten eighty West Washington, looking directly to the west to the front of our property, so they don't have to see the, the twenty-foot traffic personnel that, that come, come in and out. Neighborhood business as, by definition of the, the city of Stevensville is a, a business that is neighborhood-friendly. And there is concern that a business going into a neighborhood is gonna make it unsightly. But however, these are businesses that have been deemed by future city council members, that these are businesses that comply with neighborhoods. That's why they have a neighborhood business zoning. The business that we intend to put here is a business that operates eight to five or nine to six. And then we're open until about noon to one o'clock on Saturdays, closed on Sundays. It's not a busy, excuse me, it's not a noisy business. There was mention at the planning and zoning hearing that we own a tattoo shop as well. It's true, we do. But let me, let me be very clear, a tattoo shop is zoned industrial. An industrial business cannot go into a neighborhood business. Now, there are neighborhood businesses that coincide with industrial. However, a tattoo shop is a one-zone business. It cannot, under any circumstance, go into a neighborhood business. It would then have to come back to a planning and zoning committee and have to be requested for a rezone. If, if our property is zoned to a neighborhood business, we would then have to request for industrial zoning and go through the whole process once again. That's not our intention. Our intention is to preserve the historical home, put a flower shop there, and have a beautiful shop.
Mr. Pack?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in, in favor of the proposal?
Council, Mayor, thank you. My name is Wendell Hollingsworth. I'm here today and speak on behalf of, of Austin and Carrie. I've, I've known Austin and Carrie for many, many years. They, they grew up locally. Both of them attended Harlton State University and they're both active in our community. They, they have a passion about what they do. And, you know, as Carrie mentioned, she looks at this, she selected this historical piece of property because she has a passion about preserving that piece of property and, and having her business there. And I, I think that they would be a, a great addition to, to any, any neighborhood. I think they're gonna find that they would be excellent neighbors. And I certainly respect the, the decisions of the planning and zoning committee and those wonderful people that are given their time to serve. What I'm asking for is the council to find a way to get, get Austin and Carrie into that piece of property. I, I think it would be good for the neighborhood and, and good for the community. And I'm, I'm asking for your support in getting him into that property. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Hi, I'm Linda Brown. And those of you who know me, know me probably as the crazy brick lady. Because I'm out there, anytime they're touching those brick streets, to make sure nothing's coming up. I live in a Park Place neighborhood. And it means a great deal to me. My interest is historical. That King House is one of the few houses left from the original neighborhood. We see all around us things being torn down for progress, and that's great. But isn't it time that we hold on to something from the past that will be, will be loved and operate as a business? I respect the PACs. I know them well. I know their families. And I really believe from the bottom of my heart, they want what is best for that neighborhood. And I think they'll add to the aesthetic neighborhood and what it offers. It would be a pity to see that house torn down in the name of progress because a business couldn't operate there. All we're asking for is a special consideration of that one property to contribute to the neighborhood. And that's as a resident of the Park Place neighborhood. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. I'm Carrie Hale. I'm also a fourth-generation business owner here in Stevensville, highly invested in our community and not just its future, but also its past in that we remember how we got here. I live at sixty-five twenty County Road two fifty-eight. My relationship with the PACs goes from being a babysitter and family friend. My daddy farmed with Austin's family. And I've known Carrie's family. They've been a part of my life always. Their investment in our community is a family tradition and it's a standard for the rest of us to follow. I would like to address specifically the current use of the property and the zoning decisions and the ones that are also similar to PAC's request in the way they've been changed. I've looked at the tax records and there are a hundred and fifteen properties from one end of Harlton Street to the other. And of those hundred and fifteen, only fifty-three are owned by individuals. Sixty-two properties are owned by government entities, churches, businesses, from Dr. Vandenberg to a flout, to a beauty salon, to a locksmith shop. And there are also, the tax records show that other people are paying personal business property tax on their property along Harlton Street. And there's a history beyond that. As a little girl, I remember walking to the Little Red Hen to get snacks on the way home from school or stopping by Ms. Ferguson's flower shop that was there. A huge number of the properties are owned by corporate entities and investors on that street, I guess in, in hopes of, of capitalizing on the long-term use of multifamily housing there. My grandmother graduated from Harlton in nineteen seventeen, my great aunt, Fane Hickey, in nineteen twenty-three, my grandmother in nineteen forty-one, and I finished in eighty-seven. And I love the stories of the shirt-tail parades down Harlton Street to the downtown square and that community that was a part of Harlton Street. And I believe the PACs business will support that and, and revitalize that community spirit and businesses working with neighbors. In regard to the future land use map, I did a lot of research and, and came across the idea that that needs to be a living, breathing document that changes as a city changes and needs to be updated as the needs change for our city. Multiple examples of changing in our city since two thousand and eight, when it was adopted, zoning has been changed, but not updated or reflected as Mr. Allen discussed it in the future land use map. Like the Allsups on the Northwest Loop was changed from multifamily to commercial. And several places that were either industrial or downtown areas were updated to allow for restaurant alcohol sales to meet requests of landowners. Again, I just ask that you consider and apply these same standards to the PACs as they make their request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, okay?
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I'm Rosemary Nagel. And my residence address is four oh one Blue Bonnet in Stevensville. I come to you tonight to ask you to support the request by Austin and Carrie Pack to rezone the property at ten ninety-two Harlton Street from R three to B one. I hope that each of you received a copy of the letter that I sent to the city council. That gives a few of the reasons that I support this rezoning. And if you have not had it made available to you, I'd be glad to read it to you right now. I brought a hard copy to City Hall yesterday morning. And you do need to fix your stevenvilletext.gov email address because those of you who have that address, it would not go through to you. So you would have received an email. University Flowers, the business that Carrie wants to move to this location, is a thriving business benefiting both the Stevensville, Erath County community, and the Harlton State University community. If this were someone who just moved in and beginning a startup business, I might feel differently. But because not only I, but also the majority of longtime Stevensville residents have known Carrie all her life, her parents and her grandparents before her, I see this as a win-win situation for all. I would like to address some of the concerns and some of them have already been addressed, but to reiterate them. Some members of the community are concerned that not only this would be a florist, but that they would also want to move the tattoo parlor to this neighborhood location. As you have heard, that cannot be done because of the zoning, and they have no desire to do that. Other members of the community have expressed concern that if the business fails and the decision is made to sell the property, what might come in as a business? That's a valid concern. I would be concerned also. But I believe there is a solution. But first, I want to address the statement, if the business fails. At this time, there's no reason to believe it will fail. This is already a thriving business in our community. They're just wishing to relocate due to the fact that Harlton has bought the property that they're currently in and they have to be out by the end of August. Based on the history of the business and the determination of the owner to continue to be a success, this should not be a major concern. And yes, I know that businesses fail, but not as much if they are well-run and provide a product or service that is beneficial to the community. My possible solution, the rezone could be done for the owner only, not the property. And if the owner sells the property, it would revert to the B three zoning. If I'm not mistaken, this was done maybe. If I'm not mistaken, this was done maybe six to ten years ago on a house that is on the block that my father's home is on.
Ms. Nagel, can you talk to them?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? Yep, please.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, councilor, my name is Evan Arrendal. I, I live at ten eighty-one North Harbin with my wife, Debbie Harmon. Sorry, Debbie Arrendal. I am Carrie's stepfather. It's been my pleasure to tell you I have been her stepfather for almost thirty years. Ms. Nagel brought everyone up for point, and that's if this business fails. Let me tell you all quite clearly, this is not the first flower shop Mrs. Arrendal has started. Very first flower shop she started is in the oldest building standing, I believe, in Stevensville, Texas. Dr. Thompson's notes to me were correct. That's the Arrendal Building. That's me. That's my last name. If you spell it, I'll buy you free coffee. That was her first flower shop. Her second flower shop, I think y'all know where it is, and I believe it's in a testament to the money that Mrs. Arrendal put into those flower shops and her foresight, but they're still there. Carrie, with, with respect, Mrs. Arrendal's money also helped Carrie and Austin start this. She typically bets on sure thing. Ladies and gentlemen, I've been a prosecutor for the last ten years, and I'm glad to be home again finally. I have prosecuted cases from New Mexico to Alaska. And yes, I would like to thank the USO for standing for justice for all. And I know that's rather lofty. But real quick, raise your hand or just think about it for just a second. I too grew up next door to Linda Brown, Councilman. My home's been there since nineteen twenty-seven. It was a serious kid. And my great-grandparents, Marvin Mathis Arrendal, and then my grandparents, Homer and Catherine Arrendal, who raised me. That house is still there. Sometimes I wish we still owned it. Ladies and gentlemen, I remember Fred at Little Red Hen. I remember Mama Jane at Ferguson's Flowers, Stevensville Floral Melodies at where I took grandmother to get her hair set or colored or something like that, Fort Bend. Liza's Cafe. We're old school. If you look in your records, the Arrendal family has been in this town since the day it was founded in eighteen fifty-four. That doesn't give you free coffee and Jaden Dorothy's butt, what the heck, I can say. Also in attendance tonight are our godchildren, Brandon and Chandler Robertson. Their grandfather used to sit right where you're sitting, Jay Louis Adams. Also my business partner is Adam Clayton. He's in Idaho right now. I asked Adam for permission. I asked my godchildren permission to have to say this one thing. If Mayor Evans and Mayor Clayton were here, I believe that they would say the same thing. Let's do the right thing. Let's find a way. It is a flower shop. My daughter knows how to run a flower shop. This business will not fail. My son-in-law knows how to run a business. Picks up his job as well, he does. You will be very proud of any amendment you make, the variants you make. This will be a wonderful thing. Government's been millions of dollars trying to create anchors for environments. The PAC family is going to build an anchor. Who are the people in your neighborhood? Who are the people in your neighborhood? Mr. Rogers just asked me that question. I'll be, uh, the new people, the new families in our neighborhood. The Lockbacks, Little Red Hen, et cetera. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Okay, seeing, seeing none, then I'll ask those wishing to speak in opposition to the measure.
Good evening. My name is Amy Crew, and we, my husband and I, own the property that has the largest border against the property that is willing to be rezoned. We do not support it. It is a neighborhood. It's our neighborhood. We've been there for twelve years. There are lots of concerns about, you know, people coming in that we aren't sure who they are, at least with a rental property, which we have those all up and down our street. We know, even if it's only for six months, we know the people that are living there. We get to meet them. And we knew buying the house twelve years ago that it was zoned R three, and we knew that there were gonna be lots of people in and out of the neighborhood, but at least that they would be there for six months or at least, you know, and we could go meet them. We worry about the property values. We worry about traffic. We worry about it just taking the neighborhood out of the neighborhood. You know, there's, there's places for business, and in our opinion, in, in a neighborhood is not that place. So we are just asking that you agree with P and Z and not allow it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening, council members. My name is Karen Finney. I live at ten sixty West Charlton. This is two doors down from the property. My home was lived in for more than twenty years by Verona Perkins. I'm sure you all remember the Perkins Store. The idea of a business in a neighborhood is a novel idea. But the people that are wanting this don't live next to a business. They live in other places. Family members all live somewhere else. For me, this is not a personal issue. I, I say that because of everything that was put out on Facebook last week. Carrie posted that she was even prompted to tear down the home and put in the ugliest apartment complex that this city has ever seen. I printed that so that you could all have a copy if you're interested. I, I'm concerned, you know? What if that was to occur? I, I'm trying to raise my family. I intend to live in this house for the rest of my life. I love that property. I love the neighborhood. It's currently zoned B one, but those are all religious buildings and residential properties. And the plan is to rezone it into R three in two thousand and thirty. So then what? You know, I mean, it's... That's all I have. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Let me just make sure there's nobody else. Anyone else in opposition? Okay, then at this time, I'll, I'll close the public hearing, and I will ask the council that we, we proceed with the discussion to consider adopting the ordinance that's been provided. I'll read it again. Ordinance twenty seventeen oh zero eight, rezoning from R three, multiple-family residential district to B one neighborhood business district, lots one A, one B, fourteen B, and part of fourteen A, block sixteen of S five four hundred, Park Place addition to the city of Stevensville. This, as Jeremy stated, this recommendation comes from P and Z with the unanimous vote to deny the request. And to, to overturn that requires not seventy-five percent of those council members present, but seventy-five percent of the council. And so, which is seven votes. And so there are seven council members here tonight. And so to overturn the P and Z decision is gonna require a unanimous vote by the council. And so I'll just remind us of that as we move into discussion. So, and I'll recognize this trust of you at the time.
I did, I prepared a statement. I guess when it comes to same, well, I'm rather nostalgic myself. I miss the charm and character of the fifties when I grew up here, when Allen grew up here. And we had neighborhood stores all over this town. There was a flower shop for many years, as been mentioned, on Charlton. In fact, Carrie's dad had a flower, his first flower shop was on Charlton. So there's been a flower shop on Charlton in the past, and, and there's been one a block from where she's asking for. There were two dry cleaners on that street. There was a boarding house diner on that street. And on the very block that we're talking about, there was a neighborhood grocery store. And I see people on Facebook all the time reminiscing about walking to that grocery store during school to eat lunch. And I walked there too. And I never can recall anybody ever complaining about these mom-and-pop businesses being part of their neighborhoods. And I'm not sure at what point the city decided to zone these neighborhood businesses out of existence. But I'm one of those ancient councilmen that was criticized during the last election for our age. And I, but I miss the charm of the fifties, and I'm excited to see new businesses, but can't we have both neighborhood businesses here too? We've addressed the tattoo parlor issue because if, if I thought a tattoo parlor was going to go there, I'd be adamantly opposed. But she's across the street from B one zoning. And it seems like our zoning's arbitrary because east of the square here, she wanted to go into a neighborhood over here. It's own business, east of the square. She could've gone in over here. So I think fifty feet across the street, she could've gone in. So it seems like to me we're arbitrary with our zoning. We need to update that plan, and we need to look at it. But unfortunately, we haven't, and she's subject to what we've got now. And that's unfortunate, we haven't updated our plans. So I'm going to support her request, and I wish that some of the others would too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other?
Good news. Jeremy, what parking requirements are there, and what parking requests did they put in and they're planning for rezoning? I know that there's the, some of the B ones that are in the area that have been referenced so far have parking issues. I know one personally.
You know, Mr. Turk is the one that, that has talked with them through our conversation. I think they're gonna have, I mean, it's gonna be minimal parking that's gonna be required for their type of business. The way that I've understood that they were gonna develop that, I think they're gonna be okay with parking. They're gonna meet that parking requirement.
Street parking is off, off-street parking.
It's gonna be off-street parking. They're gonna develop, I don't know if the other pictures is good. So you can see probably where that little square is, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they're gonna develop a little parking area in there.
Sorry, there are pictures in the, the packets for you. There's, they're in black and white. There's pictures of, you'll see a fence, and there's a border around there. The, the current city ordinance is that for every two hundred square feet of floor space in your business, you require one parking space.
What square foot?
It's fifteen fifty-six.
Both upstairs and downstairs, fifteen?
It's just one story. There's a patio upstairs, but it's, it's not a finished attic, so it's fifteen hundred fifty-six.
You'd have to have seven parking spaces.
We'd have to have eight.
Eight parking spaces.
And there's more than enough for a, for a, for a case place.
The other, the others, just a comment. You know, the hundred-year-old, hundred-plus-year-old home may be terrible. I mean, because it sounds like if we keep this B as R three, what's gonna happen is as Charlton has moved west, it's gonna take it over and put it into a three-story apartment complex, or, or somebody will. But that'd be sad to happen, happen with that building. So, I mean, I'm torn over the issue. I know that there are times that, you know, there's nothing wrong with putting a single-family home in the middle of three, R three built area, for example. So if I, if I wanna go to an R three area, I have to go build me a single-family home in the middle of that, which would change, to some degree, still residential, I understand that. The fact that this, this building is a residence, really. I mean, it looks, it'll be a business, I understand that. But the idea that it sets with the rest of the house is a concern of mine that we, you know, that we're gonna build a compartment complex there. However, I do recognize that there are neighbors who have problems with it as well, and it is a, a change in how we do business, so I'm conflicted with the issue.
I've got one more here up there, Jeremy. Why was the staff's recommendation to deny this rezon?
State law and, and our subdivision ordinance suggests that, says you shall, the, any zoning shall follow the comprehensive plan. And according to our comprehensive plan, it doesn't, it doesn't meet that rezone. So, and that's in our subdivision and state law.
That's what I was talking about a while ago. It taken amendment to the comprehensive plan before we could vote to approve this.
That's right. If we follow the state law and the subdivision ordinance.
That's right.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna clarify this point because Jerry brought it up, you just brought it up. The way you've said that, it makes it sound like we're breaking the law if we rezon. So is, is that the case or, or not? Because if, if that's the case, we shouldn't have even considered it at P and Z. It should've been denied as an application. And it should, never should've gone to P and Z.
My only answer to that is, you know, the case law suggests that certain situations like this that didn't follow comprehensive plan, there was a suit that was filed after that. And so whether we're breaking the law or not, it does, there is a potential.
Breaking the law with maybe having some kind of a civil action. We wouldn't be breaking the law by changing the zoning here. We, we have done that regularly. It's not breaking the law. It could cause civil action repercussions.
Alright, and I, I think that's an important clarification because if all you hear is, if you approve this, you violated state law, that's, that's very different than, than saying.
Yes, different.
Okay, so how would, how would you state it, Randy?
I would state that you're not violating state law if you wanna change the zoning in this case. Not state law prevented.
Okay.
So could that, would, would the change to the, would the amendment to the comprehensive plan have to happen before that happened?
No, it, it's, it's possible. I, I think that would be the best way I would put it. You've, you've got your comprehensive plan for a reason, you need to follow. If no law against not following.
Didn't we then change the comprehensive plan when we allowed the apartment complex on Wolf Nursery Boulevard? It was zoned industrial, and we changed it to R three. The question of spot zoning came up during that conversation. That's twenty-eight or whatever, a thousand square foot. This working app's a huge complex. We did the same thing with two of our gas stations that were in different districts, and we changed zoning for them as well to allow gas stations to come in. So, I mean, I, did we change the, did we go back and change the comprehensive plan for that?
I don't believe so. I wasn't here at that, at that particular time. I wasn't sitting in the seat, you know? I'm just advising the way I know how to advise. So, I mean, the council at that point may have done that, may have went against my recommendation or whoever's in that seat recommendation and, and went ahead and done the rezone. I'm just giving you my recommendation.
I think we did go against the recommendations staff on that, one of the apartment complexes, I think.
But I don't think the comprehensive plan had that zoned contrary to what we changed it to, if my memory is correct, and in this case it does. I, I think that may be the difference. It, it was, we changed the zoning, but I don't think we went against what the comprehensive plan called for.
That may be true. I just know that it was, it was listed as industrial, but it's next to F and C. And that was part of it, and the question was, we had school on one side, commercial up in north and south of it on Wolf Boulevard. And then that was like three acres or four acres, wherever that was, the old Wolf House. And it became, we changed it from industrial to multifamily.
But I don't think the long-term, the, the comprehensive plan called for it to remain industrial, if my memory is correct.
Would be interesting to find that out. It, it may not address the difference tonight where the vote happens, but especially if, if the mayor's correct with the numbers of votes it requires.
Well, and that's not my, and let me clarify on the vote piece because that's not my conclusion. That's what I was provided by Mr. Barnes, so.
That is the local government code.
Okay.
And it is, it is specifically stated that it is seventy-five percent of the council, not seventy-five percent of the council members present.
That's correct.
So seventy-five percent of the council.
The entire council is, is the way it's worded.
So what is it that requires a supermajority when we overturn? There's another thing we do that overturns them with sixty-six percent, supermajority, it's not three-quarters. What is that?
Uh, there's something about a two-thirds rule in there. I just have to go with it. It has nothing to do with this case.
Okay. Because that's, I think that's what we had tonight, we approved it. I mean, it's supposed to stay in ranch, is what they call it, I think. So what, what's the difference then? Because P and Z says no?
Uh, yes, sir. It, it's to overturn the P and Z.
See, it had to do with, I know there was some kind of rule about if they say yes, we turn them down, it takes a certain kind of percentage. If they one-rent, we have one kind of, one side of the other.
If, if they vote to recommend that there not be a change, then the recourse of all the city council has to approve it. That's all, all we're talking about today.
And it, and, and the local government code has played it, has, has stated that claim.
Okay. Alright, Sharon?
I just, I had a question, something that was brought up earlier. It said that, uh, that it was possible to rezone to apply to the owner and not that, uh, it was possible to rezone to apply to the owner and not the property, it was, is that a?
That was incorrect.
That was incorrect.
Yes, ma'am.
And then my other concern is that we don't have the full council here, that there's two people absent and, um, in the.
We have, we, we have a quorum, so we can.
Oh, I understand that, but in the interest of, since this is, this is critical to these folks, um, I think missing two council members is kind of significant. Uh, as, as far as their, uh, which I have no idea how the members would vote or anything, or, or any, even anybody here, but it seems to me that, that, uh, that could affect the, the way the vote might go, just, just because we don't have enough.
So one of the options then would be to, to redo the, re, to look at the master plan, although they have an issue with August thirty-first, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's one of the options available to the council.
And then my other thought is, or question too, is was all of this information provided to P and Z, the legal letter and the other, uh, information contained in it?
We received this right before the meeting tonight.
Okay. Is it possible for this to go back to P and Z for rehearing?
No, you're gonna, the council's gonna have to make a decision on their recommendation, on whether the other.
Okay, cannot send it back?
Don't have to, nah.
Okay.
They're gonna have to make a decision.
So they cannot go back before P and Z because one of the P and Z members said they could?
On this application.
Can they apply again to P and Z with more information?
Yes. They connect that in the document.
Okay.
So there, there's two routes that I just heard described, one is, um, for us to consider the motion, uh, well, we don't have a motion yet, but if they're pending a motion, uh, the ordinance that, that is considered tonight, if, if we approve it, then it, it moves forward as, as designated. The, uh, the other is for it to be, um, denied and, um, that would allow them to resubmit. The, the third would be to, uh, to table and, uh, us to get clarity on several issues that have come up tonight about the sequence of, um, the comprehensive plan and the timing of that as it relates to the, this area of town and the, the, uh, the zoning that's being considered. So, um, is that, can I clarify the three options that we got?
Yes, sir, I think, I think you did.
Okay.
I'm listening and trying to think, uh.
Yeah.
So can we make a motion? Might we make a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we table this until the full council here to vote.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Trussell to, uh, table and second by Ms. Zachary. And we don't discuss that, right? We just vote.
We don't discuss.
So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, the ayes have it, uh, Mr. Nix, the one, uh, nay, and so that motion carries to table this issue. And I, I would ask, uh, Alan, for, for you to, um, come up with a schedule to, to bring this to the council, uh, um, so we could consider that, um, at, at the September meeting. Uh, and we've got several meetings between now and then, a lot going on with the budget.
I, I.
Um, but at least an update to the council of, of, of a way ahead.
I, I think.
With, with the proposed calendar, I guess.
Just, just thinking right now, probably, I, I understand their, their need of expediency and we do have some other meetings this month. I will have to look at the calendar because I think I've got some, some September dates and some August dates mixed up, but Monica, aren't we? Twenty-nine, uh, twenty, it's whatever, the last Tuesday in August, that's the one.
Okay, well, I, I don't want us to, to come up with an answer tonight, I, I think, Alan, what I'd like for you to do is just come up with a proposed, um, schedule for, for us to consider.
We'll do that and communicate.
That the timing of this is sensitive.
Yes, sir.
Um, okay, uh, I, I would, um, like to thank the council for their, their discussion on this issue, um, and I would also like to thank everyone who came here tonight and provided input on this issue. Uh, this is very important for us, uh, to consider moving forward and, uh, you know, the, the idea of, of coming up with an id, uh, an answer that, um, helps the community and helps that area is important for us. Uh, I guess the one comment that I will make, uh, i- is that Tarleton Street in Stevensville is a unique location. And, um, what I believe I heard tonight was, um, what, what I would call a, a recognition of the fact that the use of that street and how it, um, how it connects the, uh, the university to downtown and, and how the city views it, um, may be awakening to things that occur in other locations that, that are separate in nature and that is, um, the, the idea of, of creating a sense of place and, uh, and the, the way that the city has, uh, has developed around these neighborhoods, I think, causes this discussion to, to occur tonight. And, um, so we'll, we'll take this forward and, um, bring it to conclusion, maybe just as quickly as possible. Okay, um, the next item on the, on the agenda is, um, public hearing on case P V Z twenty seventeen zero zero one to consider approval of a variance from the City of Stevensville subdivision ordinance, section five thirteen subsection six in order to install an onsite sewage facility septic tank system on a lot size less than one acre. So Jeremy, you wanna brief us on that issue, please?
Yes, sir, applicant Florentine Mendez has requested a variance from the City of Stevensville subdivision ordinance, section five point one three in order to install an onsite sewage facility septic tank system on a lot being less than one acre in size located in twenty-six twelve West Lingaville Road, being point eight zero nine acre tract of land out of the Jarrett Menefee survey. Um, basically, section five point one three, uh, if the sanitary sewer public system is not available, the minimum size of lot served by a septic tank system shall be one acre or forty thousand, forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. Design guidelines involving water and sewage systems on residential lots shall conform to the Texas Department of Health Publication Construction Standards on for onsite sewage, uh, facilities. Um, the comprehensive plan projected land use is neighborhood business. Um, as we stated earlier, neighborhood business, district companies, trade and personal service facilities that meet the needs, enhance the quality of life of residential neighborhoods throughout the city. Property is served by an eight-inch water, uh, water main located on the property line in Lingaville Road. Let's see if I, uh, that's not good. All right, I'm reading, it come off, I think you guys have it in your packet. Plan zoning commission voted, uh, recommended approval to the city council to grant a variance from the subdivision ordinance referenced. Um, I, we were asked at that, at that plan zoning meeting, you know, what would happen if, if the, if this did not get passed? Um, and it turns out, you know, doing a little, getting a little historical background on this, on this property, this area up there, there was some conversation at one point about um, extending that, that sewer line up there and, um, uh, establishing some kind of prorata for sewer services up there, either the developer or the city. So that's an option if, if, if this does not get passed, so.
Okay, any questions for Jeremy?
Jeremy, this may not be a fair question, but in the definition of our section five thirteen six, it says if a sanitary publ, sanitary sewer public system is not available. Define not available for me because there are, there is sewer that is already installed in two different, actually three different directions from this property. Not available to me might indicate something different than what I'm looking at when I see the map that shows the existing water and sewer lines. Can you help me clarify that?
I wish I could, I can't. Your definition of, uh, available service might be different than mine, I will say in the new subdivision ordinance that we are updating currently, um, it will have a defined, um, footage from, uh, available and I believe that right now it's written as two hundred feet. So if we were to take our future subdivision ordinance, that would, we'd be looking at as, as available services. So currently this, even with our new subdivision ordinance, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be available, uh, to this property. Like I said before, I mean, there is an option of, you know, establishing some prorata and extending the line either from the sewer, from the city standpoint and establishing the prorata or having the developer do that, so that's the options.
Under normal circumstances, would a, an individual developer pay for those expenses himself or contract with the city to do it and, and pay the city to do it to provide the water and wastewater services?
Yes, sir, over the years, we've, we've done it both ways, either the developer or the city, uh, do that. So we, we have asked for the developer to do that before, as well as the city has ran the, the sewer and established some kind of prorata, so.
Okay, but either way, the developer is responsible for the cost of that construction, am I correct?
Correct, I mean, if it's a developer would run it, if it's the city that's running it, that they, the developer or, for that particular property would pay his prorated share of that.
Of, of the frontage of that property?
That's right.
Do you know if there's been any interest from the people who have Higginbothans? Cause they've been there for a number of years and I know their system has to be showing some age. Uh, do you know if there's been any interest or any contact between these two property owners to perhaps partner on that to defray some of the costs?
I believe there was, um, over a period of time, I don't know necessarily with this particular situation, but I believe, you know, dating back, I think there was some conversation about future tie-in to the sewer system and not only Higginbothans, but some of the surrounding properties there. And I don't know where that stands or where, where that fell, I just know there was some conversation about that at some point.
Other questions for Jeremy?
So if, if and when that sewer line gets extended, uh, closer to this property, are there some procedures in place that, that would require this property owner to tie, to tap the, the sewer? If, if it, say, runs down, uh, Highway eight?
If somebody has a, a septic system, we would only require them to tie in if their, if their septic system fails. So, like the two properties that were mentioned, if they have septic systems going, if we ran, if we ran a, a system up there and try to establish a prorata, they would not be required to tie on until their septic, septic system failed.
Co, what constitutes a fail?
Um, you know, that'd be getting technical, but I mean, I think any, I'm not a septic system per, right, it's not just the, yeah, right.
Other questions for Jeremy? Okay.
Mr. Nix wants to, or Mr. Williams wants to suggest what a failure of a septic system is, if you really need a clarification of that.
Need a clarification.
He's certified and all, all that stuff, so.
It's more than just a pump out and it would be something that made early significant.
Right, okay. Okay, Jeremy?
It's not a question, I'm gonna go to sub box for a minute. This is a perfect example of annexation gone amok. We go out there and we annex property in that area town. We did it so we can collect taxes on those people, we do it so we can, and which is gonna impede them from starting businesses, because then we're gonna say, we're gonna bring you in and we're gonna force you to pay, bring the infrastructure to you. That's the most absurd thing I've ever heard. If we're, if we're gonna be business friendly, the city should provide up to their property line at no cost that infrastruc, that's my personal opinion. I know there's some property on the other side of this property that, that has a contract with the city of Stevensville to do infrastructure that they haven't done yet. And so when it's our advantage, we take advantage of, when it's not our advantage, we don't. It's one of those things where what happens is, we get out past our ability to pay for it, so we bar, now, you weren't here, I, I'm not speaking to you, I'm talking to the public. What we're doing is we're out there, we're saying, we don't have the ability to bring sewer line to you. We don't have the ability to fund it, so we're gonna make you do it and we're, we have no choice. That's why the governor's plan is to quit allowing us to annex without participation from citizens surrounding you. This is a ridiculous rule, we should have, if we annex, then we should have sewer line to their property within a certain period of time. And we should then allow only a cut access to that sewer line, that's my personal opinion, I appreciate it.
Okay, other questions?
I have a question, along those lines, when we, when we met over this before, I believe it was Mr. Dickerson at P and Z that brought this up. He said Higginbothans have been paying all these years, so Higginbothans isn't connected to the sewer lines, but they're having to pay us monthly for something?
They're not paying sewer, they're, they're paying, probably paying water, they may be paying water.
Even if they're not connected, they have to pay it?
No.
I believe they're, they're not paying sewer.
Well, this is something I had brought up with Alan earlier and I never, I know somebody that was annexed, forcibly annexed, and they're having to pay a sixty-nine dollar a month water, water drainage, stormwater drainage fee and they've been paying it for ten years and they've gotten absolutely nothing out of that. I don't understand it.
I'm not familiar with that.
And Dickerson commented that he had people that that was happening to too, and I just don't understand what we're doing to people.
I don't believe they're paying sewer, a sewer fee for that.
Okay, well, they're paying something.
And I'm not familiar with their.
Okay, other, other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I didn't sign up to speak, but.
I'm, I'm gonna get to, I'm gonna get to public, call me in just a second, just a second. Okay, all right, yeah, yeah. Okay, so let me, let me move on to that, so anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal, uh, please come forward at this time. Yes. Yeah, that's okay, just state your name and address and.
I just felt compelled to maybe, I wanna interject a little bit here, my name's Vincent Latur, I live in Vernon, Texas. What I do is I build office buildings for Ever Jones Investments and I lease them back to them. So I did that property owner, we looked around, we had a hard time finding any property that would fit the criteria we need and the biggest, you know, one of the biggest criteria is cost. You know, I, that, they've got a limit on what they're gonna pay in rent, the more I pay for a piece of property, the higher the rent's gonna get, it's that simple. Now, uh, I, I just wanted to address a couple of things, and I, I do wanna be clear that, you know, there is a lot of, a, a lot, I can't tell you exactly, but there's other businesses out there that are not serviced by the sewer. And then you, what's happened is you whittle down to one of the smallest and last pieces of property left and if this was one, instead of point eight oh nine acres, if it was an acre, we wouldn't be having this conversation, we'd just be putting in onsite sewer. However, if, you know, I don't know the city budget, I don't know how this works, if you're opposed to the, to the, to putting onsite sewage on there, I'm not opposed to participating in running the sewer, but as the smallest parcel of land left on the deal, it doesn't, it is just not feasible for me to be the one to put in the infrastructure for you and then everybody else could tie on and slowly get money back, you know, ten years from now. If Higginbothans sewer system fails them, if it does, I mean, I know of septic systems that are thirty years old. My personals, I have five kids, I got a septic system, my house is twenty-five years old. I forgot, we, I've never done anything to it in twenty-five years, so there were seven of us living there, this is, you know, I don't know how much Higginbothans bathrooms used, but it's probably not much. But I just don't see that, y'all can decide whatever you want, and if you decide that the developer would need to put in the sewer system, I would just move on, try to find another piece of property, hopefully I would somewhere around here, but we, we've looked, you know, exhausted, and we've been looking for six months to find a property that we could afford to build on and that's where we landed. But I mean, I respect whatever your decision is and if there is an opportunity to talk about a cost participation and getting that out there, I'm, I'm all ears. But other than that, I have no other choice but to put onsite sewer.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in, in favor of the proposal? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, if not, then I'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the variance for case number P Z V two oh one seven dash oh oh one to install an onsite sewage facility.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. McClen, second by Ms. Zachary to approve a variance for the City of Stevensville subdivision ordinance, sections five point three subsection six in order to install an onsite sewage facility septic tank system on a lot being less than one acre in size located at twenty-six twelve West Lingaville Road. Any discussion? Now, we proceed to vote, all is in favor.
Now we proceed to vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, that, uh, motion carries. Uh, ayes from all but Mister Nix. All right, the next item on the agenda, I'll call, open a public hearing for case number RP twenty seventeen zero zero one. To consider approval of a replat of lots one fourteen and a portion of thirteen block fourteen of Park Place addition to the city of Stevensville. To lots uh one R and fourteen R block fourteen.
I know my pictures are working on this one because I saw them a couple of times. So I apologize for that. The picture that's on your screen is actually an updated picture from what is in your packet. So I apologize for your, your packet picture. Uh, Mister James Thurman is requesting a replat of lots one uh fourteen and a portion of thirteen, block fourteen of Park Place addition. City of Stevensville, comprehensive plan, projected land use is neighborhood business, similar neighborhood that we were talking about um a while ago. Uh, the property is served by six inch sewer, uh, city water main, uh, city, uh, served by a ten inch sanitary sewer main. Um, the existing zoning in the area, the property for which the variance is requested is surrounded by multifamily to north, south, east. And to the west, it is surrounded by neighborhood business. Staff has no objection to this replat. Um, the, kind of the summary of why we're, we're doing this is they are looking to put in a pool house. Um, in, right in the middle of those, that, those two lots. And so they, they can't, according to our, um, I guess subdivision or, or the rules of it, they can't build on a lot line. So they're gonna replat that, so they're not doing that.
Any questions for Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mister Nix?
Jeremy, the, the upper portion of that rezone, which looks like one R. Because of the size or the configuration of that lot, will there be any problems with future use or construction on that lot?
Um, I mean, I suppose if they, I mean, if the building gets tore down as far as setbacks and whatnot. I mean, he owns both of those properties, so, uh, I mean, that'd be, he would be the one hampering kind of himself with, with that replat.
But if he elected to, to sell that portion, it, it appears to me it would be difficult to, to reconstruct something on that and comply with setbacks and the things that they might need to, especially considering the, the size of the lot and, and that, that configuration instead of being a rectangle with the offset in it like that.
That's right. I mean, they're gonna have to be pretty constructive with, uh, um, if they ever tear down a house and want to put down another house, I think they're gonna.
Creative is the word.
Right, creative, that's what I was looking for, sorry.
Well.
My mouth's dry, I've been talking a lot, so.
And my question, of course, that's not what the request was, but my question would be, what, what would be the downside? If you, if you drew that line that goes across the lot, if you carried it straight across instead of making the offset? That appears to me to solve his problem, but, but would make both lots you, more usable lots in, in future use. I, I guess that's my concern is future use of that particular parcel especially, uh, with, with the shape, size, et cetera of it.
I, I mean, I can see your concern. I mean, from our standpoint, he, this is the request that he brought us, I mean, from our, from our standpoint, from a replat. We didn't have any objection, any reason to object for the replat. And so we didn't offer, you know, a different scenario for him. We were okay with this, this scenario. So we did not ask him to platter a different way. We were okay with this plan.
This, this is what he presented and, and requested and.
We were okay with it.
It's not our job to be advisors, right?
In most cases, right.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions for Jeremy? Okay, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? Anyone in opposition? Okay, at this time I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor, I move that we approve the replat under case number RP two oh one seven dash zero zero one.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mister McClintock, second by Mister Trussell to approve the replat as presented, case RP twenty seventeen zero zero one. Lots one fourteen and a portion of thirteen block fourteen. So lots R one, fourteen R and block fourteen. Any discussion? Not will proceed to vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If that motion carries unanimous vote. At the next item, uh, we pulled from the agenda at the beginning of the night, so we'll move to item E, which is public hearing. I'll open at this time on case FP twenty seventeen zero zero three. Consider approval of application for final plat of the Blue Sky subdivision located at FM two oh five and private road ten ninety-eight. So.
Blue Sky has proposed two point five three acre development. The owner has submitted a final plat for this development. The property is located at the FM two oh five and private road ten ninety-eight, which falls within the city ETJ. Uh, there is an interlocal agreement with the county. Uh, the county will um oversee the, the requirements for the building. Um, we, we were looking at just plating the property. It has never been platted before. Um, uh, the water, the property will be served by private water system and private septic system. Uh, the streets will be a private, a private road um and maintained by, and they won't be maintained, maintained by the city or the county. In this situation, the developer will have to maintain those streets. Um, staff recommends acceptance of the final plat located at two oh five. Um, planning and zoning commission voting unanimously to recommend council acceptance of the plat.
Questions for Jeremy?
Yeah, Jeremy, is the ETJ line that, the line that bisects the, kind of the center of that piece, with that line?
Yeah, to the, the yellow line right there in your packet. Is it yellow in your packet? Now, there, there should be a yellow line. I don't see the pictures on this one either, but the yellow line should be the ETJ. It's to the east of that. Not that inner, not that line that you're saying. I wasn't gonna say anything.
Okay, Doug?
So, I mean, if the city annexes this property, it remains a private road. Does, does the city take over responsibility for maintenance, et cetera?
It'll still be a private road. Just not dedicated to the city at that point.
Other questions? Alan?
This property, because it falls in the ETJ, is subject to our, um, building requirements? Is that correct?
No, sir. It's not. We do, we can't enforce any of our building regulations in the ETJ.
Okay, we had a discussion about a property that was south of town that fell within the ETJ. That we, that, that was my understanding, that because it was in the ETJ, they were subject to, to the codes of the city or county, whichever were more stringent.
That would be the subdivision ordinance.
Subdivision, I'm sorry, our subdivision ordinance. But they are, they are subject to our subdivision ordinance.
If, if, if that's what we call for in the joint agreement, they would, they, to the, to the building of the, not to the building standards, to the subdivision. Meaning the roads, streets, water, stormwater. So they would have to meet those, but they don't have to, whatever they're building out there. We don't have any authority to tell them what they can and can't build in that ETJ. So as far as the streets and the water and sewer, they could meet that. But at this point, everything is private, so they, they don't have to build to those subdivision standards.
There, there is no dedication to a public entity of the right of ways. Therefore, it's no different than if they were putting a gravel road on, on a multi-acre piece of property inside the city. We would have no control. And thus, the, the answer to your question is, until it is dedicated to the city or the county, um, then, then that's when the road standards would, would be required. We can, we as the public entity, and correct me if I'm wrong, Randy. If, if for some reason this is annexed in the future and they say, okay, these are your roads, we can say, we, we will not accept these roads until they are brought up to our standards because they are a private road. Is that correct? Now, if they were, if it was to be a county road, then we would have to accept the county road because it is governed by a, a political entity. Is that correct? I think that's right. Right, to county standards. But being a private road and established as a private road, we have no obligation to, to take it. And actually, we have no right other than eminent domain if we were to annex it, to acquire it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions for Jeremy?
I will say Mister Trinkle is here and he can answer any questions if you guys have any questions for him.
Okay, so at this time I'll ask anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal. Okay, seeing none, anyone actually, uh, opposed to the proposal? Okay, we'll close the public hearing at this time and entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor, I move that we approve the final plat under case number FP two oh one seven dash zero three as presented.
Second.
Okay. Second by Mister Savine. Motion by Mister McClintock, second by Mister Savine to approve case FP twenty seventeen zero zero three. Uh, approving final plat for this Blue Sky subdivision located at two oh five, FM two oh five and private road ten ninety-eight. Any discussion? Not will proceed to vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If that motion carries unanimous vote. Okay, we had, the next item, F, that deals with the sign regulation. This came up during the committee meeting. I said that we were gonna come back to that. Uh, Jeremy had mentioned and Jerry during that discussion, uh, that we had a meeting, P and Z had met. And so Alan, um, you wanna give us a, a brief summary of where we're at before we proceed with this item?
Yes, sir. Mister Mayor, members of the council, it is our, it is my recommendation that you table this item. Uh, it took the P and Z approximately three months, three months, three meetings to come to this. Um, what I would recommend is that we establish a, at least one workshop and probably multiple workshops to work through the ordinance because it is a, a complex thing. And also, I would recommend that at some point prior to coming back to council for your consideration, that we have at least one, one town hall type meeting so we could get public input on the proposed changes for, for this item.
Thanks, Graham. Mayor, I'm someone to take a bite.
Okay, fair motion to table, second by Mister McClintock. Uh, so we'll proceed to vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that, uh, item is tabled, pending, uh, the recommendations from the city administrator for a work session and follow up with a, uh, a, a public meeting. I, I will say that, um, just one comment related to that. The, the idea of, um, reaching consensus in the community about sign regulation is, is a complex issue. And, uh, so the idea of including the public comment, um, and transferring this, transparency in this process is, is, uh, my, uh, is very extremely important. Uh, I, I would encourage the, the involvement of not only the city council, but the planning and zoning, the city staff, uh, sign companies, chamber of commerce, local business people, main, uh, the, the downtown merchants, uh, representatives from, uh, major institutions like Tarleton, the, the hospital, um, our, our major employers and any interested citizens. And I would encourage that we establish some ground rules, uh, that we gather information, we generate options, and that we reach consensus on those recommendations in a, in a transparent way. And, um, so we'll, we'll proceed with that, uh, with that effort. The next item on the agenda is to set a time, date and location of a public hearing on the proposed tax rate. This is an administrative item related to establishing the tax rate for the year. And, uh, so I'll entertain a motion for that item. Uh, council, you can find it on page seventy-eight of your agenda.
Mister Mayor, I move that we set the date for the first, first public hearing on August twenty-nine, twenty seventeen, and the second public hearing on September fifth, twenty seventeen.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mister McClintock, second by Mister Nix, uh, to set the time and date of the, um, time, date and location of public hearing on the proposed tax rate to, to be, uh, first public hearing on August twenty-nine, twenty seventeen, and second public hearing on September fifth, twenty seventeen. Uh, and that would be in this chamber. So, um, any discussion? Not will proceed to vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If that motion carries unanimous vote. All right, the next item, uh, twelve, is, um, this year, the U F County Appraisal District, um, went through their, their numbers and had to, uh, spend some time, uh, with that, which has, um, led to, in order for us to comply with our, uh, our guidelines to look at the deadline for the annual submit of, of the budget. And so, um, Alan, do you wanna give us a, a quick update on what this, what this request is about and then we'll consider the motion?
Yes, sir. Mister Mayor, members of the council, the charter says that the budget has to be submitted to the city secretary no later than sixty days prior to the start of the budget year. That is tomorrow. Um, state law, however, uh, permits the tax assessor, uh, I'm sorry, the central appraisal district to get the tax rolls to the assessor no later than July twenty-fifth. That did not occur this year. It was a couple of days late. Uh, just because of the, the hectic times that we've had with that, we are quite honestly not ready to submit the budget because we've been waiting on those numbers. We respectfully request, uh, permission to file the, uh, the budget with the city secretary no later than August fifteenth. We will have the, the budget completed and ready to go by that time. And that's, that falls within state law. State law requires that the budget be submitted to the city secretary not later than thirty days prior to the vote on the tax levy. Um, if we turn it in on the, the fifteenth, then we, we will be able to, uh, take the vote on the tax levy sometime September sixteenth or thereafter.
Okay. Any questions for Alan on that?
This is, this is just a one-time kind of a flip deal this year because of the.
Yes, sir. Oh, that's happened before, if that's what you're asking. Yeah, it, it's. Oh, sure. It's, it's not really uncommon. Um, the, uh, normally, most city charters that have not been changed in, in some time have the sixty day requirement, which was created prior to the, the establishment of the July twenty-fifth date. And so a lot of cities scramble at this time. And this is, this has been my experience of how you, you deal with that.
And I, and I think also the, I mean, the, the purpose of these dates is so that there's discipline to the process so that everybody finishes on time.
That's correct.
We, we need to ensure that we finish on time. If you're telling us these dates are adequate for that. So Stacy, what, what's our resolution number here?
I believe that's gonna be twenty-one.
Twenty-one? Okay. So I'll entertain a motion then to, uh, consider resolution twenty seventeen R twenty-one to extend the deadline uh, to August fifteenth to turn, turn in the annual budget to the city secretary's office. Motion by Mister Savine.
Second.
Second by Mister McClintock. Any discussion? Not will proceed to vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If that motion carries, approving resolution twenty seventeen R twenty-one, unanimous vote. Our next item on the agenda is to consider approval of an ordinance, uh, to amend the water and sewer rates. And so we've got, uh, Monica. Just gonna start our discussion on this.
No, no, you don't mind.
Finance committee, okay, Mister Stine, the finance committee chair.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Monica doing this. Back about a month or six weeks ago, we were, about a month ago, we were looking at budget, supplementary budget items. I looked in the budget and noticed that we did not, uh, have the water rate increase that last year we talked about doing. We had, we had four water rate increases to come, to accommodate the repair needs that we have for the current systems. Uh, I noticed that there wasn't there. So I talked to Monica and mentioned to her and she said there was no notes left for her, uh, on that process. So she went back and looked at, listened to the, uh, the meeting that we held, that I had the presentation. I'm sorry, Alan, but it took about thirty minutes to make the presentation and we agreed that we had made such, uh, these increases in four increments. One increment per four, for four years. one increment per four years. And so I asked for it, bring this before the council to consider it, so.
Okay, so Monica, you wanna review that?
Yeah, so what we would be requesting is that currently the rate per thousand gallons for the water is three ninety-five. And so we'd be requesting to raise it twenty cents, just like the last time, to four dollars and fifteen cents per thousand gallons. This only affects the water rate at all, but yes, I did go back and listen to all the finance committee meetings and the actual meeting on the May third where this was approved by ordinance. And Mr. Savine actually made it very clear that this was not a one-time thing, that it'd be one of four based on the infrastructure needs of the water and sewer system.
Can I make one additional comment, that once the comprehensive plan, the capital improvement plan is finished, then that will drive future rate discussions based on that, that capital improvement plan. But as far as we know right now, from the basis of what we looked at a year ago, and actually two years ago, this was an appropriate rate increase for, it's gonna cost, as it says here, the average citizen costs about four bucks. And so it's, I think it's an appropriate.
What is the average citizen?
Five thousand gallons, I think.
Five to eight thousand gallons a month is what we got the information from our utility billing clerk. And so at twenty cents, it'd be about a dollar sixty.
About a dollar sixty.
So you're looking at about, you know, twelve dollars and some change.
The item that we've found before is we did, I worked sensibly with Walter at the time and with Nick. We found, if you remember, I think we were running eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars under the current operational needs to keep the system where it is today and to keep it from failing. So that's where the numbers came from, this is only on the water side, not the sewer. And it actually generates about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I think.
Yeah, a hundred, depending on consumption, it can be anywhere from a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand a year.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, 'cause this, this increase just covers the maintenance costs of the piping systems, nothing else. Isn't that correct, Nick?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
Because that's the only number that we know.
Correct.
That's correct.
We were going to do an in-house study of our costs. What happened to the study we were gonna do in-house on the...
Are you talking about a rate study?
We were going to look at our rate and our cost and see where our rates needed to be. We wanted to hire a consultant, we asked it to be done in-house, it was several months ago.
Right.
And then we talked further with Mckethan when he was here, and he said it was a simple, it wasn't that difficult to do in-house, and he would talk with staff about that. He didn't.
Well, the last time I, the last time I talked to Mckethan is he was going to recommend that this needs, that needed to be, a rate study needed to be done by an outside party, that we just didn't have time to do it. But in my opinion, we gotta have to work through, you have to assess your needs. So the AMP plan and the capital improvement plan, we have to know what we've gotta do, not just this year, not just five years, but you know, quite a ways down the road. And once we get that, looking at our salaries and our operating, then we back in to say, this is what it costs us a year. Then we look at what revenue does it take to generate that? And then you back in based on your consumption and the number of connections and future growth and all that into what your rate structure would look like. So it's not really that simple of a process. And the problem that I see here in Stevensville is that we don't know what our infrastructure improvement needs really are. I can tell you just from working on the budget, what Nick has in the budget currently this year, we're at a deficit for this year, according to the department request. With the revenues that I've got in there for the budget and what we projected, we're in over a two million dollar deficit this year alone. And that doesn't include what we're looking at in the future.
If I remember correctly, the way we created the dollar figure for what maintenance was, we looked at existing funds for maintenance, and then we took the numbers of miles of sewer and water lines we had. We put a dollar figure to that, and guess where we created what we need, requirements for repairs. And so it was a, it was a quick, not detailed analysis as what you're referring to, whether we did inside or out. I think the capital improvement plan is really the bigger way of addressing that.
Right.
Long-term, what are our needs, how do we address those needs over the next one to ten years or so? And keep pushing that number out a year or two at a time. So the number we had last year was a fair number, it was, it was a, like Kenny said, just numbers of times how to get an elephant when bite at times, so that was, we took a four-year bite at it, is how we count the number we did.
And what we're looking at right now in this year's budget is this year plus five years out. So when I've been working on this budget, I've been looking at our debt requirements for this year and five years out. We've asked the departments to give us information on their fleet maintenance and things of that nature so we can get those numbers in as well. So hopefully, we're not just looking at this year, but we've got an idea of what we're looking at in the future as well.
Well, I had hoped that when we had a rate increase proposal before us, we would also address the summer surcharges because they're so burdensome, they keep people from watering their yards. And when they can't water their yards, then they have trouble with their foundations cracking, and then property values go down. So I think at some time we need to have a discussion on those burdens, burdens, very burdensome, that's a hard word to say, summer surcharges.
I think when we get into the true rate study, and that's when we'll have to address that. Because if you take that piece of the puzzle out, you're taking out a significant revenue source. So when you do that, you're gonna drop the revenue significantly, and then the question becomes, you know, how do we make up that revenue?
But do we want people to drive through our town and see brown yards all over town? That doesn't say welcome to Stevensville.
I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying anytime you take a revenue, a piece of your revenue out, you either have to drop your expenses or find a replacement.
Or we can average that over twelve months instead of burdening people where they don't.
That's true, there's more than one way to have a rate structure.
Any other comments? I wanna just make one, one quick comment here, that, back to the meeting that we had in the finance committee, and what I think, and Alan, I appreciate your leadership with this and the finance committee's work on this and the utility work on this, but listen to what Monica said. She said that we, we as a city do not have, cannot quantify the cost to maintain our infrastructure for water and sewer. And we've done that for streets because we created a pavement management plan. And we now know the condition of all the streets in the city, and we have a strategy to fix it efficiently and effectively by keeping things from failing and from fixing things that have failed in that order, not waiting for everything to fail. We have got to do this for water and sewer. And use the word consultant, plan, or whatever, I don't care. The fact remains that if we're not able to define the spend rate, the dollars we need to expense to keep our city functioning, then we are failing the citizens of this community. And we don't need a water study to determine, you know, where water sources are coming from. We need a, we need a water system strategy and a sewer system strategy that prioritizes our needs. And I realize that the asset management plan that we're headed to do this fall is a great step to that. And so what this request for a tax rate increase was, for the committee, was a recognition of a larger problem and instead of ignoring it, to at least take an initial step in the direction that we know we need to take because we've got infrastructure that is in very poor condition. And so this is not taking a huge leap, assuming more than we should, but it's recognizing where we are. And I think the increase is necessary to provide these services to our citizens. But more importantly, the question that Ms. Trussell brought up about the need for, and Monica, I really appreciate the answer you gave. The order that, to do this right, the order that needs to be done, is to understand what the requirements are from a facility, infrastructure perspective, to then assign a rate to. Because you don't wanna, you don't wanna fix things prematurely or at accelerated rate. In other words, our rate would be too high. You wanna know what those, those needs are so you can set the right rate. And that's, that's what we need to be, that's what we need to be working on. You know, what we used to do was compare our rates to other cities and say, you know, our rate is close to this city, so we ought to feel good about it. Well, no other city, none, have the exact infrastructure that Stevensville does. That's why this plan has to be specific to Stevensville. And Monica, you heard her say it tonight, time is an issue. So the use of a consultant is not necessarily to buy expertise, there's only twenty-four hours in a day. And we've got to help staff navigate through this with us and find a way to get this information and get off of the thought that we can't use a consultant to help augment the staff. I think we're getting answers back from staff that they think we wanna hear because we've been so anti-consultant. But if we're now, as you pointed out, six months later, we just need to make this a priority. And whether we do it in-house or get a consultant to help us, we need to get it done. And I think it's, obviously, I think it's really important. And so the tax, the rate piece is a small step of that. So is there any other discussion or questions?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
What was it, a couple of years ago, that we got the new and improved meters? Okay, at that time, it was estimated by Public Works that we were collecting money for eighty-five percent of the water that was going out to the consumer. Which, if we got the correct meters in there or read the assumptions correctly, that would've been a fifteen percent in income. What happened?
There was an increase.
Pardon me?
There was an increase in revenue.
Yes, there was.
We sold more water.
Was it a fifteen percent? Was it that significant?
Between the fifteen, the fiscal year ending fifteen and the fiscal year ending sixteen, we had a five hundred thousand dollar increase in revenue. A portion of that was because of the twenty, twenty cent increase. We did have some higher, higher usage in, there was, help me out here, Nick, do you remember the number I had? I think there was about twenty thousand, or twenty million gallons more pumped, so, than the previous year. But we sold eighty million gallons more. So we actually did have an increase. Now, as far as whether we're, we're not quite, according to my calculations, with what we've paid on the debt, we're not quite break even. I think at the end of this fiscal year is when we will see that that's starting to turn around because we didn't have all the meters in, correct, by the end of fifteen?
But there was some savings while it was being installed. The initial reports, the year one report, had a guaranteed savings of three hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. That verification, it was performed by Johnson Controls, said that not only did we meet the three hundred twenty-two thousand dollars in savings, there was an additional twenty-five hundred dollars in savings. Coupled with the savings from the installation period, which took about nine months, that was an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Can you explain the savings? Was the savings because the meters were more accurate when they were being...
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, I paid for one that was sold.
And Jerry, you're bringing up a really good point. I mean, that, that increased revenue from the consumption is something that's gotta get factored into this rate structure. Because it is, it's something that is not, not recognized.
Well, anything we can do to keep our lake water out. I shot a couple of wild hogs a couple of days ago, they fell in.
Why didn't you let them get farther away from the water before you shot them? That's your fault. Okay, any other discussion on this?
I, I have, yes, sir. Several years ago, we began a systematic analysis of our wastewater system, similar to what we're talking about on the water system now.
Are you talking about the basin study?
Yes, to study all of our wastewater collection system in the city, to map it, to camera it, to basically go through catalog, pipe sizes, deficiencies, et cetera, et cetera, to help us on the wastewater side. And Mr. Williams has requested, I think more than once, that we do the same with the water system analysis to locate the lines, to find deficiencies in sizes and valving and other things in those lines and system the same as we're doing on the wastewater collection system. And all of those things are important parts of our rate structure in determining what do we need to do to maintain and improve the system and the efficiency of the system? But also what do we need to do if and when we get ready to expand that system, in whatever direction we choose to expand it in? And I think the water system analysis, and I don't know if that's gonna be in Mr. Barnes' budget this year or not, we'll discuss that later, but the wastewater study, I think, is an important part of the overall operation and hopefully maintenance, long-term maintenance of our system and our city. And so I agree with what you're saying, we need to be proactive on these things. We need to continue to try to not only maintain, but we need to try to improve these things and eliminate the inefficiencies that we have because of the size of line or because of deterioration in those lines.
To answer your question, Mr. Nix, we are proposing a water system management plan, very similar to the pavement management plan. Wastewater and stormwater management plans also. Those, all of those plans go hand in hand with the AMP plan. And so, as I recall, looking at Mr. Williams' budget, they are all included in the proposed budget.
Good, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we implement ordinance number two thousand seventeen oh oh seven to increase the volume charge for water from three ninety-five to four fifteen per thousand.
Was that a second down there?
It was, that was premature.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Nix to approve ordinance twenty seventeen oh oh seven, amending the water and sewer rates from three ninety-five to four fifteen. Second by Mr. McClinton, any discussion?
That was only water rates, Mayor, I don't believe.
Oh, water rate, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Not will proceed to vote, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, that motion carries, one nay, Ms. Trussell. I'm sorry, counsel, but I've gotta say one more thing about what Mr. Barnes just said, just for clarification. There's two levels of information to determine how much to invest in infrastructure. One, I would say, is the level of detail that an engineer would take to design a project to say, this is how much it costs to fix the road. The other is what I would call a planning and programming estimate about what, a scientific estimate of what it costs to fix that road. The pavement management plan is a planning and programming level of detail. It doesn't go down and go through all the details and cost estimating that an engineering study would do. I'm a little concerned that our basin study, though it is, it's very important, is kinda seat and row information versus getting in the stadium. These plans that we need to help guide our asset strategy have to be getting in the stadium level information, not seat and row. Seat and row of where you're gonna sit in the stadium is a level of detail tied to a project. And so Alan, whatever you're bringing to us, I hope that it's not so much detail and so much money that it's trying to get seat and row information because that's paying way too much for information that's not necessary to program a budget.
And to be honest with you, I wanted to get in the parking lot.
Okay, all right, we'll get in the parking lot, that's good. All right, thank you. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by Mr. Nix, second by Mr. Clinton, Mr. McClinton, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? If not, we proceed to vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, that motion carries, unanimous vote. All right, Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this Thursday is the last summer night concert. It's the songwriter show with Larry Joe, Daven James, Richard Lee, and Keith Sykes. On Wednesday the sixteenth, we see our schoolchildren going back to school. Please be very careful in school zones as, as we start the new school year. We have budget workshops beginning on Monday, August fourteenth, as you approved tonight. August twenty-ninth is the special meeting and first called hearing on the tax rate. September fourth is Labor Day, September fifth is regular council meeting and the second hearing on the, the tax rate, and September twelve, uh, twelve, or the sixteenth? In, in September, we will adopt the tax rate budget.
Okay. Anything else? Questions for Mr. Barnes? All right, council members.
Oh, I do have one more thing. And it's on my weekly report for this week, but I wanted to go ahead and tell you, we have finally gotten reconciliation with waste connections, and the fuel surcharge netted us twenty-two thousand dollars of additional revenue.
Okay.
Great.
Good deal.
Excellent.
Thanks for your work on that.
Have I fixed the pickup issues?
That will also be in your weekly report about a meeting that was held yesterday.
Okay. All right, Mark, you got anything?
Uh, just for the, because of the impending first day of school, I wish everybody a successful and productive school year.
I'd like to thank P and Z for all the work and research they did put into developing a new sign ordinance, and I know we're moving forward with that, but they did a lot of hard work on it, so thank you.
Tax-free weekend coming up.
All right.
And then we do the quick pay and taxes.
All right. Mr. Nick? Sure? Sure?
Good.
Okay. Alan, I had requested via email, I'll go ahead and do it with the council, I'd like to get an update from the Fort Worth office of TexDOT to be presented to the city council in the October-November timeframe, preferably, to give us updates on, on the work that they intend to do, and specifically provide us an update on Graham Street and their plans for it. I had sent an email earlier and gotten a response that it's in their twenty-twenty plan, and I'm concerned that if we wait till the year twenty-twenty to, to fix that, that, that's going to be a problem. The main thing, I think, I'd like to request is, is just for them to actually see if they can find Stevieville from the Fort Worth office and come get us an update from, from the district engineer about what their plans are for, for the, really, the E. R. F. County area, because we're at a crossroads of so many major state highways. And I think it's important for our planning purposes to understand that, and I realize I'm asking for the Fort Worth district office, I'm not asking for the local office, not to diminish their ability or, or their information, but I know as you that the decisions are made at the district level and higher. And so, hopefully, you'll be able to get that for us. I just want to let the council know tonight that, that that request had been made.
Mr. Mayor, in, in response to that, we have submitted five or six emails to the Fort Worth office and have not received a response.
Okay. Well, um...
Maybe the wrong one. Your chest doesn't look right.
Okay, maybe we'll, I mean, that's good to know, and that, that's, that's really upsetting.
And I found out today from our CETA guy that the vice chairman of the state transportation committee is from my hometown, so...
Eric Phillips.
Phillips, okay.
Yep.
So I will attempt to make a phone call and show it.
Okay, and I, and I think we're also going to need to make a phone call to our representatives to try to get, get them, to get engaged, to get, get that as well. Okay. Well, then, at this time, I will call us into executive session in compliance with the provisions of the Texas meeting, open meetings law, sections five five one, zero eight seven, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations, and section five five one, zero seven four, personnel matters. Thank you.